Yeah.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. It is our regular town board meeting of the town of Rhinebeck. It is September 14th at 6:00 PM. Would everybody like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. I will make a motion for the approval of prior minutes for our August 10th regular town board meeting and our August 24th special town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? Any questions, comments, town board members? Did we lose Ed? Oh, no, there he is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? So moved. Ed, I can't really see you.
I'm having a problem understanding.
Okay, well, as long as you're there.
I'm there.
I'm going to hold announcements committee liaisons on reports and go right to the continuation of our public hearing for a local law amending Chapter 125 of the zoning in the matter of revising a district's schedule of use regulations to allow a motor vehicle repair and service establishment in the ORP zoning district pursuant to the issuance of a special use permit and site plan review and approval and to provide criteria for such use. We have a public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment at this public hearing? Town board members, any comments? Anybody from the public, any comments? Hearing none. I'm going to move to close the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Warren, hi. You want to take over?
Hi, okay. The only thing remaining, I provided you.
Should we bring, let me bring the resolution.
Yeah, why don't you do that? That's a good idea.
Hold on, we'll vote on this right now. We've got, I will bring forward, this is tab number 10, Resolution 2021-87, accepting the proposed local law and scheduling of a public hearing for proposed local law number to be determined of the year 2020 entitled "A Local Law Amending Town Code Chapter 125 and Zoning in the Matter of Regulating..." Wrong.
Oh, yeah, it's not 10, is it?
John, where is our resolution?
Came via separate email, I thought.
Town clerk?
Would you like me to read the caption, Elizabeth? I have it in front of me.
It's not on our agenda.
It was emailed, it was emailed to you this afternoon by Warren.
It's not on our agenda.
No, it's not.
Okay, I didn't get a copy. I apologize. Chauncey, why don't you read it?
Resolution adopting.
Well, wait, wait, we can't read the resolution first. I have to, we have to finish Seeker.
Warren, we're bringing the resolution to the floor to vote, to vote. We have to bring the resolution for this to the floor before we can do Seeker, correct?
No, we have to finish Seeker first and bring the resolution to the floor. So let me do the Seeker. It'll just take a few minutes, okay? So I think you all have, we sent you a Part 2 and Part 3 of the full environmental assessment form. That was prepared by our consultant, James Levy. And just have to, we've already prepared a Part 1, which we've accepted. And we need to just go over the Part 2, which is answers to questions regarding the potential environmental significance of the project. So I'm just going to read the, each section of the Part 2. And James and I have already filled it out and just need your consent to agree with what we have put in there. So the first issue is, will the proposed action have any impact on land? And we have indicated no, because it does not, the action is the rezoning of the office research park provisions of the code. It does not involve a site-specific action and it will not involve the construction or fiscal alteration of the land. So we've indicated that no. If you have any objections to what we've indicated, let me know as I go through it. The next would be impact on geological features. And the question is, will the proposed action result in any modifications or destructions of or inhibit access to any unique unusual landforms on the site, including, for example, cliffs, dunes, minerals, et cetera? Again, not a site-specific project. We've answered that no. Number 3, impacts on water. Will the proposed action affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies? We've indicated no. 4, impact on groundwater. Will the proposed action result in any new or additional use of groundwater? Or will it have the potential to introduce contaminants to the groundwater? Again, we've answered that no. Impact on flooding. Will the proposed action result in any development of land subject to flooding? We've indicated no. 6, impacts on air. Will the proposed action include a state-regulated air emission source? No. 7, impact on plants and animals. Will the proposed action result in a loss of flora or fauna? We've indicated no. 8, will the proposed action impact agricultural resources? We've indicated no. 9, will the proposed action impact aesthetic resources? We've indicated no. 10, will the proposed action impact historic or archaeological resources? We've indicated no. 11, impact on open space and development. Will the proposed action result in any loss of recreational opportunities or reduction in open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan? We've indicated no. 12, impact on a critical environmental area. Will the proposed action be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area? We've indicated no. 13, impact on transportation. Will the proposed action result in a change to existing transportation systems? Again, we've indicated no. 14, impact on energy. Will the proposed action cause any increase in the use or any form of energy? We've indicated no. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. Will the proposed action result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting? Again, we've answered no. 16, impact on human health. Will the proposed action have an impact on human health from exposure to or existing sources of contamination? We've indicated no. 17, is the action consistent with community plans? We have indicated that it is consistent, and so we've answered that no. Is the action consistent with community character? Is it inconsistent with existing community character? We've indicated no. So that would be Part 2 of the full environmental assessment form. We've also completed a Part 3, and I'll just read to you, it's a very short analysis what we've put in here. "The proposed action will result in the addition of a use to a table use for the Office Research Park zoning district located along Route 9G in the town of Rhinebeck. The proposed proposal brought about by a petition for zoning amendment submitted by Ruggie's Automotive, Inc., and then processed by the town board adds a motor vehicle repair and service establishment to the Office Research Park zoning district and is generally consistent with the intent of the district to provide for office, commercial, and light manufacturing uses. The proposed use is also similar to the large equipment rental or sales use already permitted in the zoning district. And this is a modification of an existing zoning district, which will add a use generally consistent with the intent of the district, and it is similar to an existing use. It was determined that the proposed rezoning will not result in any significant adverse impact." Also, I'd like to point out that the proposed zoning will also provide a community benefit in that it's going to reduce some of the impact on the existing Ruggie's operation located in the town of, in the village of Red Hook, if and when the...
Oh, it's Rhinebeck.
I'm sorry, what? I have a meeting with Red Hook after this one. My mind is in Red Hook. In the town of, in the town of Rhinebeck. And it will reduce, we hope, some of the impact on the existing Ruggie's facilities in the village and will therefore provide a benefit to the town, which supports the rezoning. If and when an application is made for a site-specific site plan special use permit for that property, there'll be a much more intensive environmental review of that site-specific project. But for the time being, the rezoning itself, we determined and advised the board to agree that will not result in any significant environmental impact statement, environmental impacts, and that the preparation of environmental impact statement need not be prepared. So if you are all in accordance with that, the negative... Pardon? Couldn't hear that. Someone say something?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You don't think...
If you're...
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. If you're all in accordance with that, then you can go ahead to the resolution, which, which contains the language with regard to the negative declaration.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-89 for amending our Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of revising the district's schedule of the use regulations to allow a motor vehicle repair and service establishment in the ORP zoning district pursuant to the issuance of a special use permit and a site plan review and approval and to provide criteria for such use. May I have a second?
Second.
Was that Ed? Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion or questions?
And in the resolution is the negative declaration and gives us the history also of the rezoning process. So once you adopt that resolution, you'll also...
Resolution.
What's going on? There seems to be a reverberation. Once you adopt the resolution, you'll be adopting the negative seeker declaration. And when you pass the resolution, the local law will have to be filed with the Department of State and also published in the environmental notice bulletin for the DC.
Great. I guess I'll do it by, unless the board has any questions or comments, by roll call. Alan?
Aye.
Josh Pulver?
Aye.
Chauncey Walker?
Aye.
Ed Roberts?
Aye.
And Elizabeth Finziah, yes. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with that.
Good luck, Scott and Ruggies. We hope this helps with your business and thanks for staying in Rhinebeck.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. This is a big hurdle past and we can now go to work on our site plan.
We wish you the best of luck and I look forward to your continued thriving here.
Thanks to everybody that helped get this, get it through and get it done. Appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. Bye-bye.
Bye now.
Okay, is there anything else? You know, Warren, we, we... Can you stay for the consolidated court study and...
Yes, yeah, I want to stay for that, yeah.
Is there anything else on here that, you know, we could do? I'm just going to skip around a little bit. I'd like to go to tab 10, Resolution 2021-87, "Accepting the Proposed Local Law and Scheduling of a Public Hearing for Proposed Local Law Number to be Determined in the Year 2020 entitled "A Local Law Amending Town Code Chapter 125 Zoning in the Matter of Regulating Place-Structure Type Treehouses in the Town of Rhinebeck." May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Okay. Let's table it. Does anybody have...
There's a small detail that needs to be adjusted that was brought to my attention.
Okay, we will table this then, and is that okay with you, town board?
Yes.
Okay, table. Thanks.
I just, I didn't hear the reason for the table, and what was that?
So I spoke to Chauncey earlier today and he had a concern about the height.
Okay.
Of how high the maximum. So I think it's a reasonable point. I think we should discuss it and tweak it that way.
Okay.
Great, so we'll table. Thanks, Josh. Okay, we're going to go on to, let me just quickly look here. I'd like Warren to stay for the climate smart, the CSA and that, you know, and then our court consolidation presentation, which I'd like to skip around and do now, just for the public. Last year, a year and a half ago, the town and the village received a grant from Dutchess County for Consolidated Services to look at and plan for consolidating our village and town courts. Villages in New York are not required to have courts, justice courts, towns are. We went out for bid and we worked with the LeBerge Group, who worked with a steering committee of Chauncey Walker, myself, village trustee Richard Lewitt, and Mayor Garrett Bassett, and they looked at all aspects of the justice court and spoke with Justice Kane, the judge who participated, all the staff, and looked at all the records and the caseloads for the past several years and showed us many things. And, you know, Kathleen Rooney and Lucy Stites are here this evening from LeBerge to take us through a presentation on what we found, what the recommendation and plan is, and how we're going forward. So thanks for coming, Kathleen.
Thank you. I'll wait for Lucy to put up the PowerPoint presentation.
Right.
Thank you, Lucy. Appreciate it. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Kathleen Rooney, and as supervisor indicated, I'm a local government specialist with the LeBerge Group. And we started this process earlier in 2020 and worked collaboratively with the steering committee of the town and the village. Maybe we could just move quickly, what do we want to, what do we want to accomplish this evening in our presentation? So I'll start out with introductions, and then I think we'll, we'll move towards why, why did the town and village want to do this? And I think the supervisor has touched on a lot of that. We'll also talk through, what was our study process? Who did we engage with? What did we look at? So you get a feel for what we did. Then we want to move into a review of what were the findings from our process? And what are the opportunities that we see for the village and town in it, working through a collaborative process? And then also, we identified some grant opportunities. We recognize now those grant opportunities maybe stayed for a bit, given the COVID environment, but we'll talk through those and hopefully, as things improve, we'll see some of those grant opportunities open back up. And we can move to the next slide. I do want to just talk to you a little bit. Ben Sidon is the Vice President of LeBerge, and he is our team leader. Ben was not able to make it tonight as he had, was having a pretty large medical procedure today. He wished he could be here, as he was, he was with the process from the beginning all the way through. And as I indicated, I'm a local government specialist. I come to this with 30 years of municipal management experience. Ben brings to this almost quarter of a century of experience working with municipalities on shared services, including numerous projects that involved justice court shared services and consolidations. So that history, I think, became very helpful as we teased through a lot of the issues. LeBerge's, LeBerge Group's approach to this is really a partnership. We don't come do a study with paperwork and then hand it off to you. This was a completely collaborative process with the steering committee, as town supervisor indicated, and lots of interface with the staff from the courts and the staff from each of the town and village. Everyone was extremely cooperative that we worked with. They're probably glad they're not going to have five phone calls from me a week, so probably that part will, will move from. So I think from that, we'll go to the next slide. And as supervisor said, this, the town board and the village board looked at a number of reasons to look at the justice courts. Villages don't, are not required to have the courts, towns are. Relative size of your courts compared, on a statewide comparison. You were, you fall in the small to low-medium size. There are some that are 30, 40-fold your size. There are some that are much smaller. I think another obvious factor is that your, your courts are physically located truly across the street from each other. So that just lent additional rationale for, for looking at this. We, the, why we all, the, the town board and the village board have indicated that what they're really looking for is, what kinds of service improvements? What kind of cost effectiveness can we do? How do we improve the service from the perspective of the users, which are primarily constituents? And how do we, how can we do it in a, in a cost-effective manner? Are there opportunities here for us to look at? And then, as the supervisor also said, Dutchess County, through their Municipal Innovations Grant, provided an opportunity to get the study done at no cost to the village or town. So here's what, here's through the process what the steering committee asked us to look for. We want, they wanted to find savings. Can we reduce costs? Can we save taxpayers' money? Can we, can we reinvest some of that in improved service delivery for the, for the constituents? Can we improve service delivery for both the public and some of your major stakeholders? Which would include the offices of the district attorney, your public defender, the sheriff's transportation unit. How can we make this a better operation? And does consolidation enable that to happen? Are there duplications that are happening because the village is doing it and the town is doing it? Can we, can we eliminate some of those, some of those duplications? In this day and age, everyone has a focus on security. Is there a way of improving court security? And that is, and that when you do it as, in a consolidated way, that you're not having to replicate it twice, but can you make some of those security improvements once for the community in one facility? And then the last piece is, while we're looking at this, can we, can we take the opportunity to look at court facility improvements? And so we, LeBerge Group has a licensed New York State architect as part of the team and as part of this project. We took a look at the facilities and came up with, and had some findings and some recommendations and opportunities that we see potentially for, for the, for the community. Lucy, next slide, please. So before we jump into what we found, we just want to review, what is that process of dissolving a village court? The, it happens, you know, a village Board of Trustees can create a village court and they can dissolve it. And they can do that by resolution or local law, and that is subject to permissive referendum. Second, really critical piece is that you can't do it at a time where you would interrupt a village justice's term. And the village justice term ends 3/31/2021. And then there's a transition process that takes place between the two courts, and then the active cases are transferred, transferred to the town court. So in the study, what we, what we did was we looked at an overview of the justice court system. What is the responsibilities? What's the domains of the justice court system? What are they responsible for? We looked at the court operations. We looked at the village court operations. We looked at the town court operations. And then we brainstormed with everybody and got ideas from a variety of people on, what would that look like if we were to consolidate those courts? How would it be different? Where would be some opportunities? We did the same thing with the facilities review. We looked at both facilities. We brainstormed strengths and weaknesses of the, of the, of the facilities, and we identified potential opportunities for the, for you folks to consider long-term. And then we did a fiscal review to get back to what the Board of Trustees and the town board asked us. Can you find savings for the overall Rhinebeck community? What, how do we do that? What does that look like? And then we've, and then in total, we've kind of pulled it all together. We pulled, we pulled all the information together from the various components, and we've put together for you a series of findings and opportunities. So here, here's, here's our approach. Again, I think it, it, our approach really is, is, is grounded in a partnership with the local community. This isn't our study. This is, this belongs to you. We are really just facilitators of that process of pulling out and, and pulling people together and looking at what, what are people's observations? What are people, what do people believe to be opportunities or, or issues that need to be addressed? We collected and analyzed a lot of data. We looked at your caseloads. We looked at your staffing. We looked at your budgets. We looked at your levy impacts. We did all of those pieces to bring forward to you folks a study. We conducted stakeholder interviews and we distributed surveys to ask people for their inputs. We were looking for a variety of different ways of getting input. Our architect came down and spent a day, and we had tours of both facilities. The municipalities also provided for us relative to the facilities, any existing floor plans. The, our architect did a comprehensive assessment of the facilities in order to come up with what would be some logical solutions for you folks. We, we prepared a review of current state. What do things look like now? And then what is a potential opportunity? What is the potential for a consolidated court? What, what would that look like so that you have something to compare to? So I'm going to walk through at a high level a series of findings that we have and opportunities. I'll walk through them at first, and then I think there's, we'll, we'll, we'll get into some specifics on certain pieces of it in the next step of the presentation. So clearly, we found that there is opportunity for operating efficiencies between looking at the way current operations are and the way, way operations could be. Key is, I think that the number of court sessions could be, could be collapsed over the course of a year, reducing the number of court sessions. There are a significant number of tasks and reports that the court staff have to provide on a daily, monthly, annual basis that you're doing at the town level and you're doing at the village level. If, if there, if there was a consolidated court, while the volume of activity within those reports would be increased, you'd be literally cutting the number of reports you have to do in half. So you really, there's, there's some, some really obvious opportunities. If we go from, right now, you've got two courtrooms right across the street that are fairly large, nice space, that also have offices attached. If we were to consolidate into one court, that frees up the other building to not have court activities in it and potentially can free up space for meeting space. We did find cost savings, and we will walk through a little bit of that as we, as we go down, go down the presentation. But we, we believe that there's approximately $26,000 less in a combined justice system than... Then than as is if you added the two impacts of the village and the town. And the impact to the savings to the to the village. Is approximately forty five thousand dollars a year to the village government. And there is a slight increase of nineteen thousand to the town government. But an overall net savings of twenty six thousand dollars to the Rhinebeck community. Office operations, we believe that with consolidated staff. In one location, it provides for an ability to have enhanced office coverage. And then also backup coverage for staff when they're when they're out. So it has a dual office operations component to it. I would say the stakeholder efficiency and effectiveness. It was a very, very significant finding. And it with all people interviewed in the justice system as well as. I think a number of the town board members that were on the steering committee and the village board members. They all identified that there is. A confusion for the public. In which court to go to on which night. They're located on the same street with very similar addresses. They're right across the street from each other. And you have and they have the same name. They're both Rhinebeck Justice Courts. One is village, one is town. But I was. We were very surprised at the level of inefficiency that that has. How that impacts the justice court staff and all the other stakeholders in the system. So we were we were surprised at that at that finding, but it was a universal. Issue that that was raised. We also identified along the same lines that. Because of the similarity in name, location. And the confusion as to which court do I go to? Is it the Monday night court? Is it the Wednesday night court? Am I there at four o'clock? Am I there at six o'clock? That there it resulted in a number of missed court dates. Just caused by. Nothing but the similarity in name and the proximity of the two ports. The court clerks identified that they spend quite a bit of their time fielding phone calls. Working on reworking the calendars because people realize they oops, they went to the. They thought it was five o'clock. Now, no, that was the town court. It was actually they should have been at the village court at four o'clock. So a number of those issues just really emerged through through all the discussions. The other opportunity. Relative to court operations was court security. Currently, when you have two ports and court security involves both. Facility and it involves operations. And to make those investments twice is very expensive for a small to medium sized court. But when you combine them, there's more. It's it's relatively less expensive to make some of those improvements. That I think both the town board, the village board. And the court system would really like to accomplish. And this could be an opportunity to address some of those things. An example being to be able to do. Weapon security checks at at the entrance to the court. If you if both courts were to do it, you'd be you'd be replicating the system in both courts. And if with a consolidated court, you could do it. Significantly more cost effective in one court than two. Similarly. In order to look at and address some of the court facility improvements. Again, it would be we'd be doing it and we'd be recommending recommending certain improvements in two court spaces. Or in a consolidated court facility. We could make a series of recommendations at it. It worked out to be approximately half the cost to do one court than to make those improvements in two. And then last is we did identify grant opportunities which we spoke to. And we'll we hope that those court those grant opportunities will it will reemerge in the next year or so. So the architect, when he reviewed both courts, the village court and the town court. Both were found to be. Very acceptable, very appropriate courts for 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 the town and the village. The steering.
Do you mean it? You mean in term of space?
In terms of space, correct. I apologize, yes. And the steering team asked us to look at the town justice court. To be the identified facility to be used on a townwide court. So our architect went in and did a more in-depth review. Provide you folks with some findings and possible recommendations for future design work. And that included a conceptual floor plan and a series of recommendations which I'll outline in a few minutes. So to I wanted to give folks the relativity of the two court sizes. I mean, as you can see, there's the town is slightly bigger. But. On the trap vehicle and traffic. The villages has about eighty percent of the the caseload of the town. On the penal law, it's a little bit more like. Fifty to sixty percent when you look at it over multiple years. The criminal court. While the caseloads are lower, what we've learned from the justice court system. In Judge Kane in particular, that those are the much more time consuming cases. And so we have to be careful as we look at how we are looking at a consolidated court. We had to break it into the various types of cases. Next slide. So the staffing that you currently have is there are. In the town of Rhinebeck, there are two justices. Both functioning on a part time basis. And in the village, there is one justice and an acting justice that in in the. In the village justices absence, there is always someone who could could handle the cases. Court clerks, the the town has two part time clerks. Who work when you look at their hours, they they basically they basically equal about one. Full time equivalent staff person. And the village court has one full time staff person. So you're basically functioning in total with two full time equivalent staff people. What? What the process through the process, what emerged was that there is significant value in in potentially converting. Positions to full time so that there's constant coverage, there's continuity. So that is an opportunity for you folks. But again, at the end of the day, there isn't a reduction in the full time equivalent coverage in the in the consolidated. Court model that we we all worked on together. So let's talk about the court sessions. So each town justice currently holds two sessions a month. There are certain months that there could be a collapsing of courts just based on based on current caseload. But in general, it's two times per month. At the village, the justice holds two sessions per month. One being. The vehicle and traffic and the other being criminal. So in total, there are essentially four vehicle and traffic sessions held right now. And four criminal court sessions held each month. The concept in a townwide is that. That the the volume of in the vehicle and traffic, the number of people that are coming into the courts. We wouldn't be able to collapse that down to just the two town existing courts. You would have to hold probably. An equivalent number of vehicle and traffic sessions as you have right now, which is four. But they would all be held at the town. Just the volume of people and the size of the room for security purposes, you probably you're probably at your limit. What the caseload did identify is that there's the potential to. Really just have to continue the two existing town. Criminal court sessions that you have every month. They may run a little longer, but you but that it was doable and feasible to do that in two court sessions per month. So. Right now you have two village criminal and you have two town criminal. And the recommendation would be to consider. Two town, but potentially with a slightly longer evening. So that just reduces. Again, more of the confusion of where should I be? What time should I be there? What location? So. Another big piece of this. Impact on the public, impact on your community partners such as the district attorney. The the attorneys, the sheriff's office is that. With a consolidated operation, it's going to give you the opportunity to increase the office hours at town. And to have backup for your staff so that if they take a vacation, there's somebody there. And so what this does is you're going to have you'll be able to have up you'll be able to have office operations Monday through Friday. You'll have limited missed calls because there's always somebody there. And hopefully limited calls in general. Because you're there's less confusion as to which court, which time missed missed court dates, etc. It will facilitate payment of fees and fines. Meaning it's one place, less confusion, hopefully more more time to facilitate some of that those payments and and management. Of those accounts receivable accounts. And to facilitate dedicated time to records management, docket management and accounts. The there are there are there are there is quite a lot of responsibility. On the staff on the justices and the staff relative to reporting requirements to New York State. Some of those are monthly, some of those are annual and. And these reports have to be generated for each justice. So in theory, right now, those there are four reports being done monthly. There's four annual reports being done because they they're done by justice. In the in a consolidated world, you're 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 cutting the number of reports. That the staff and the justices have to produce in half. And there are there are a number of there are a number of pieces to this to this. There's account account reconciliations, there's bank reconciliations, there's reconciliation of the bank accounts to the other accounts. There's case case management reports, case management reviews that need to be done. The volume will be greater. But the number of times you have to do it individually is reduced. Again, it 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 provides efficiency for your and just common sense. Ease for your for the for your partners and the community and the public. Lucy? Thank you. So. Overall, for stakeholder impact, and I think the number one stakeholder is the public. And also your partners. A full time justice court office operation with streamlined court sessions. One location really does provide significant added value. There's the obvious efficiencies, but there's also just improved. Community relations and improved community understanding of where the court is, what the court is, where do I go? When do I do it? And hopefully with that will become more compliance. And less missed court dates and and potentially additional affiliations and revenues to the municipality. Alright. So Jim Clark, he is the architect. Did quite an analysis and. You know, he met and has had significant conversations with number of the town staff and the village staff. To come to some of these conclusions. That the you know, as we said, the the space is adequate. But there but at this point of potential change, where are some of those opportunities for for your consideration for some improvements? So I think the first piece is that. In the town hall, you have a stage area. Off the town court. That was presented as an opportunity for to pick up additional office space in in town hall. So in in theory, the concept is to flip. The operations of the justice court in town hall. And have the what is now the stage area become the office area of the justice court system. That enables the from a security perspective. An ability for the justices to enter the courtroom directly from from their chamber area. Without needing to go through the court at all. It create creates an opportunity to add some conference space. Within the within the courtroom area. There's conceptually a concept of creating a mezzanine to address some of the record storage issues that. Are had with with. With court records being a significant volume of those of the records that need to be stored. And then security enhancements, we talked about the separate entrance for justices. Another recommendation would be to consider. Procuring interlocking chairs so that chairs are not picked up and thrown. And used inappropriately and the interlocking chairs really limits the capacity to do that. To identify a particular holding area for prisoners. And then and and then to add the screening equipment and the operations component that would go along with. Including a magnetometer and or security wands at the front entrance. And then just general facility upgrades, heating ventilation. So with this comes some potentially freed up space in town hall for for use in other ways. If we move the town justice court staff into the. A stage area. So it there's some other opportunity that like a byproduct value to to the to town to the town government. And we had talked about the grants and I'll just name a few. The local government efficiency grant is offered through the New York State Department of State. It is. They they forewent the round this year just based on the COVID issues. But but the the grant opportunity is up to for you folks because there are two governments involved. Up to four hundred thousand dollars of which the local governments have a would have a ten percent share of forty thousand of that. But that could go a long way to addressing any transition costs to some of the court improvements that you may want to consider. You were fortunate enough to get a Duchess County Municipal Innovations Grant. Maybe there would be something that could support the actual implementation. The justice court court assistance program is a relatively small grant program, but it's available annually. That could provide you with another source of revenue to implement some of the improvements. And then records management being a big piece of this. There is also a local government records management improvement fund that could potentially be an opportunity. The management improvement fund really does focus specifically on shared service projects. So this would fit in nicely with their mission and agenda. So I with the next piece that I wanted to review for you folks is. What 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 happens financially and fiscally to the town? To the village if you were to consider consolidating? So we have to look at a couple of factors that are going on to just get some baseline information. So I might point you on this chart to the Village of Rhinebeck Justice Court. And if you look at the two thousand eighteen nineteen line. You can see that there are revenues totaling almost eighty six thousand dollars that the courts generate. But the village itself only retained about fifty one thousand dollars of that. The balance of that money is distributed to New York State. And is distributed to county, the county government. The bulk of it being the bulk of that differential going to the state, the county gets a very small piece. And you say, well, how how does that get calculated? Well, each of the different types of statutes and laws that people may offend have different. Sharing relationships. So it's this complex set of New York State statutes, the Uniform Court Act. And variety of local laws that drive what that mixes and and you'll see it is different between. The the town and the village. And it is based on that whole complex mix of. of, of offenses and then the, the statute, the New York State statute. The second factor, we could go to the next slide. The next factor is, what, what does the village, what does, of the village budget, how much does it, how much does the village, does the justice court cost the village taxpayer? And how much does the justice court in the town cost the town taxpayer? So what we did was we, we looked at both of that before we even talk about consolidation. And when you look at the, I, we took the year of nine, two thousand, we took for the village, the 2019 slash 20 budget. And we said, what does it cost based on the budget numbers? The only differential we did to the, the budget was, we added in things like uh, fringe benefits, retirement system costs, social security, those kinds of costs we added in to try to get a pretty fair picture of what does it cost the town? Then we said, how much revenues does the village get to keep that offset that cost? And we used the 2019-20 budget figure because it's 50,000, very reasonable based on your historical. And what it boils down to is, the village taxpayer cost for the justice court is $43,000 a year. $44,000 a year. Town, on the other hand, has expenditures currently of 100 and, 111,000 based on the town's 2020 budget. Plus we added in whatever those fringe benefit costs similar that we did in the village. And then we said, what are the, what are the court revenues that the, that the town retains? Not total amount, not the amount that goes to the state or the county. What is the amount that the town gets to keep? And what does that then mean if you, after that, what, what's the impact on the taxpayer? And you can see the impact on the taxpayer is lower in the town than it currently is in the village. So we looked, so if we could go to the next slide. So when we, what we did was we built a uh, a sample consolidated budget. And we looked at what would, what is, what does that all cost and how did different pieces shift? So what happens in the village, the village, if you remember, had expenses greater than the revenues. So they get rid of the, they get rid of all the expenses, they get rid of the majority of the revenues. But at the end of the day, it saves the village taxpayer uh, $45,000, over $45,000 a year. Town is picking up slightly higher expenses than it is revenues. But the overall savings to the Rhinebeck community is $26,000. So the consolidation, just based on the efficiencies and the way you can do things when you're one building, in one building and not in two, generated $26,000 in savings. Uh, so when we looked at everything, um, we found, we found a positive impact um, to the public uh, in terms of um, just common sense, where do I go, how do I, how do I interface? Potential opportunity for your stakeholders. Uh, we found efficiencies in the system. Uh, we found efficiencies for how the staff operate and the types of things that they have to do all the time. And we found overall savings of $26,000 for the community. So those were the key things that um, came out of the study um, that we did over the past six or seven months.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um, basically, you know, what we're being, oh, let me shut myself back on. Where am I? Sorry, everybody. Um, thank you for that. What, we're being um, encouraged, pushed, cajoled to consolidate services and departments and delivery of services, and, and it's the right thing to do. It helps our taxpayers and the village and the town of Rhinebeck wo, work really closely together. But what we've found here is that this is a no-brainer. Not only does it save money, which is of course important to us, it delivers a better product. We have a drain on our, uh, on our town clerk's office of people parading in all afternoon from two until when, when we close, looking for court clerks, because they, they're closed after two in the afternoon. So we'll have, have one full-time court office open to serve the public the same hours that the court clerk is there. We'll also have a space that is compliant with the state judicial court code with, with chairs that can't be picked up and thrown and separate entrances for the judges, and we'll have security, which neither the village nor the town has now. So, you know, we're taking two departments of government right across the street from each other with the same judges and the same staff, and we're consolidating them in one space uh, to serve the same people, saving money and delivering a better product. Um, so thank you for working with us on this.
I'd like to just thank everyone who we worked with. It was really a, a nice partnership and we, we very much enjoyed it.
As did we. Um, Justice Kane, are you here? Do you have any questions? And I want to thank you, uh, and your court clerk for all the time that you spent working on this with us.
Well, I just wanted to start off by um, congratulating or commentating on Ms. Rooney for the very thorough statement. I just want to, not the legal point of view at first, but she commented on the cohesiveness of the courts where everybody, somebody is there. There's no uncertainty. People know when they're there and we can consolidate certain dates, would, would be best for everyone. Now, I'll give you an example that um, and it's based upon the legal aspect, that the town has jurisdiction or the ability to handle all the cases in the village. So it's not that you're taking village cases uh, away from the village, the town has the authority to deal with all the cases. As far as um, the police are concerned, the Rhinebeck Police Department, they're um, willing and more than able to take care of the needs um, with the troopers and the sheriffs, but the Rhinebeck Police Department can help out um, and does help out and staff, and has several mentions, the security. Without the magnetometer, aside from that, which is important, they have staff and they've always been committed and they're certainly spend half their time in the village and half their time in the town. That can be um, put towards the town. There's the intangible, but it was made reference to as to the stakeholders. Now, I'll give you a specific examples. That means when uh, lawyers come or public defender comes, private lawyers rather, they are between two different courts. The uh, sheriff's office has to bring prisoners to the extent that it's warranted that they are prisoners. Um, and they first have to go to the village court and then wait until they finish. This is the duplication of time with the sheriff's office. They would come one time, um, know uncertainty about whose responsibility it is, and that logistics of transportation is um, a big deal. And furthermore, the public defender and the lawyers will have, especially with any conference room, it's very significant that they will have the ability to conference with their clients. Rather than meet with them a short time because we got to go to another court. That's very important from a judicial point of view, then satisfied that everybody has a full opportunity to discuss with their advisors, what is important on the case. The um, the only other point I, um, report was, uh, this report is very thorough. And I and my court clerk met with Ms. Rooney in the past. I just want to uh, say that as a judge, I would feel more uh, confident than ever if there was, if uh, the staff here uh, closing, covering the court, because we, we get, and the town employees are subject to people coming to the door and there's not a court. That's troublesome sometime. So we, this will solve that problem. And that's, that's um, not only a benefit to the court, but a benefit to the other town employees. I understand how difficult it is when um, a person is there and he or she is supposed to be there, but there's nobody um, uh, from the judicial part to be there. That can all be solved, so people will feel comfortable, the stakeholders will feel comfortable. They'll know which day of the month Rhinebeck is meeting. That's a good thing. So, um, well, that's, that's just my general overview.
Thank you, and thank you for helping us sort through all this, uh, Judge. Um, you know, we think it's a good plan for everybody. Gary, Rick, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, um, town board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, Elizabeth. Very quickly, three things. I would second what Justice Kane said. The report is thorough, it's well organized, it's a very impressive job, and I think we should all be grateful for that. Kathleen mentioned in her report that um, costs, overall costs after consolidation would go down by an estimated $26,000 a year. However, if I remember correctly from reading the report, and, and I have, and I recommend it, but you take some time, it's not a quick read. I believe Kathleen, your report also says that overall revenue will not go down.
Um, Chauncey, I think the, the net savings is, it, um, the village will save $44,000, around $45,000, and the town will come out ahead about 26, correct Kathleen?
Yeah.
But we're at, but for that savings and that, that realization, we're adding services that we don't have, like a full-time um, court office, full-time employees, the same judges, the same staff, and more, um, more, and, and security.
And I'm making a related point that um, overall costs will go down, but overall revenues will not go down. Is that right, Kathleen?
That is correct.
I think that's where.
A, a small, a small piece of, um, the, you know, village clerk estimated about 2,000 remains with the village. And the balance all ships over to the town. But overall, it should stay the same.
And my last comment is that if we do this, the location of the offices of the justices and their staff where the stage now is, Kathleen, you said that that way they won't have to pass through the courtroom to get to their place during the proceedings, and that is correct. That also means they won't have to pass through the public hallway, which I imagine Justice Kane would find and everybody else.
Oh, it's a little interesting at times.
I'll bet.
Thank you. Anything else, Chauncey?
No, thank you.
Anything else, Josh, or Ed, or who's my other board person, Alan? Warren, do you have any comments?
No. I think it's a, a excellent report. I, I don't want to weigh in on the um, on the issues at this point, though.
Yeah, LaBerge, Kathleen, you, you and Ben were a pleasure to work with, so thorough, so accommodating. Um, and, and we really appreciate it, so thank you. Um, I know that we'll see you in a couple of weeks in the village hall, but tonight, uh, I'd like to um, have a motion for tab number two, Resolution 202179, accepting the court consolidation study and plan and referring it to the village. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. So, um, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Um, thank you. We are, refer, we have sent it to you, Gary, but we've officially accepted this, we're endorsing it, and we wish you the best of luck and, and hope that your board will support it too, and we can consolidate the courts and deliver a better service. So I know that we're scheduled to be at your village board meeting in a week or so, so we'll see you there.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, looking forward to continue to working with you guys. It's, it's a pleasure to have um, such good friends and partners and local governance across the street.
Thank you. With that, we'll, we'll leave you?
Yep, and we'll see you uh, at the village meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Justice Kane. Good night. You guys can stay or leave, because Kathleen, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the town board meeting. Okay, moving right along. Warren, is there anything else that you would like to stay for?
No, you mentioned something else. I'm trying to remember what it was. There was something else on each?
Um, I think it's climate smart, but we're, we're.
I don't think you need me for that.
I think we do either.
Yeah, okay, I have another meeting to, to go to run to. All right, see you guys later.
Thanks for your help with the zoning amendment. I'm glad we finally did that. Um, you guys, let's just get some of the other presentations um, on the way. Carrie, you wanted to discuss some recreation's uh, issues with us, correct?
Yes, um, thank you, Elizabeth.
Carrie is our, uh, Carrie McCurdy is our acting recreation director, soon to be recreation director. I think we're just waiting for civil service approval, correct?
Yeah, yes, that's right. Um, so, hi, everyone. Um, I, I did want to bring up a couple of issues um, that Elizabeth and I had talked briefly about. One thing is the use of pavilions. And I know that we have decided to allow the, the friends of the library to have their book sale in a pavilion um, in October. They've had a couple of meetings in one of the pavilions and um, they will need several days during the book sale um, prior to and after, both for setting up and cleaning up. So um, with that, the um, folks at the library, I guess, have indicated to other groups that we have allowed this, and now I'm getting uh, quite a bit of contact from other groups. I had already gotten contact from people prior to this about using the pavilions as well. And uh, the decision was, had been made that we weren't going to allow use or rental of the pavilions.
Well, that was in high COVID time. And now our infection rate is very, very low, and I wanted, you know, Carrie to get used to coming before us and talking to us, but also to ask you guys what you wanted to do. Do we want to open up pavilion use and rental to community groups and people? Or uh, just community groups and not public? What, what's your feeling here, Alan?
Yeah, the problem is that there are no restrooms, and uh, the pool is there, so, you know, there, there's a, at least a safety consideration. The reason I thought the library use was reasonable is because the library has restrooms. And the library people can use those, whereas if somebody has a, uh, an event at one of the pavilions, there are no restroom facilities.
Good point. What do you guys think?
Astonished. I, I think I remember lots of discussion about restrooms when we were working on the pavilion matter.
I understand, but we, but.
Our restrooms aren't open to the public, Chauncey.
Oh, oh, they're not open yet. Oh, okay.
Because of, because of COVID.
All right, I stand corrected.
We do have them. They're not, that, that's a good point. Um, Josh, what's your feeling?
I mean, the tennis courts are open, there's no, they're, they're being. It's not, it's not.
Ed?
Bathroom facility at the library sounds workable. I think Alan's right.
Well, I mean, it doesn't mean that the library will give us their restroom facilities if we open up the uh, pavilion. Carrie, was there anything else you wanted us to talk about?
Well, um, we did, we have also gotten um, requests to have the basketball hoops replaced. We uh, since basketball, well, put back up because we had Bobby take them down.
Is it, okay, let's stay with the uh, pavilions.
Oh, okay.
You have a recommendation or the rec committee or?
Um, I have not spoken to the rec committee about this. We haven't had any meetings. The only thing that I'll say is if you do decide to open them up, I don't know that I would feel comfortable charging for them, because we do normally charge $25 for a rental.
Are you talking about the pavilion at the end of the pool?
Yes.
I think we should leave it closed since it's closed. I think we don't have the staff on board, we don't have the bathroom, we don't have the porta potty. That's just my feeling.
Oh, I agree with Elizabeth, so.
What, Ed? Josh?
I'm, I'm outvoted.
Chauncey?
Are we distinguishing between the new pavilion and the one near the pool?
We're only talking about the one by the pool. The new pavilion is, it's there, the bathrooms aren't open, and they're not open in the wet, in the winter.
Okay. Just a feeling that with regard to the new pavilion, and I'm not sure, I followed the conversation quite correctly, so I'm not sure how this fits, but as far as the new pavilion is concerned, it's a really nice facility. It sits there. I'd love to see us start using it as soon as we can. The other questions, who can, who we let use it and what we charge, you know, that's secondary. Let's, I'd less like to see us put the thing in service.
Well, we had a little COVID pandemic, which the brakes on opening anything.
I haven't forgotten.
I agree, yeah. All right, Carrie, I think the consensus is we're not, we're just going to let the library have it, and, and, you know. And as far as the basketball, I think the governor told us to take them down, but if he says we can put them up, put them up.
But basketball and volleyball are still considered high risk, and I have not seen any recommendations specific to park facilities. The recommendations I've seen are regarding places like gyms and places that have teams, so it's a little bit different, I think.
No, I took them down because he said it, we had to, so.
I mean, I'm in agreement with you, too.
I just, I don't have the public health experience to supersede the state's recommendation, and we don't have, you know, we're not the county. I've just been going by that, so. Josh?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, you guys on board?
Yeah. I mean, the, the other consideration, just so, so we'll have a complete story, is if we do let people use the bathrooms, they have to be.
We're talking about the basketball court, not the bathroom.
But in any case, the, the facilities have to be disinfected, which is an expense that we're also not ready for.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have the labor to clean as frequent, that's why we didn't open, it's a labor issue, you know. We couldn't make the, so part of what we didn't do with camp, we don't have the labor to disinfect according to the, to the State Department of Public Health recommendation, so. And I think it served us well. The county is doing really, really well with COVID infections. So, all right, Carrie, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
And I know I'm seeing you tomorrow for budget. If you could just email Shelley and I your budget pages beforehand, and I'll send out a Zoom.
I, I, okay, I did email them to Shelley. I'll email them to you as well.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, everyone.
Now, we have a brief presentation from David Chernak, who's our Bard Center for Environmental Policy graduate student, who is helping the Joint Town and Village Committee, Environmental Committee, and he has been taking a deep dive into our town code and comprehensive plan to look at specific recommendations as they affect environmental issues. So, David, tell us what you know.
Hey, thanks for the intro, Elizabeth. So I'm just going to share my screen. I have a couple of slides up for you guys. So, yeah, I'm David Chernak. I am, I live in Hyde Park, but I went to high school in Rhinebeck, and I'm currently a grad student.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's great.
Yeah, yeah, I graduated in 2013, and after college, now in grad school with the Bard Center for Environmental Policy, where I'm getting my master's degree in environmental policy. And Matt Stinchcomb reached out to me to basically engage me in this internship, working with, as, as Elizabeth said, the Joint Environmental Committee. I'm directly overseen by Vanessa Bertozzi, and I've been working closely with Josh and with Gary, and with some other folks, basically going through the 2009 comprehensive plan, seeing what's in there, tracking down leads and figuring out which of the many, many, many objectives that were outlined in that report were undertaken and completed in the 10 years since.
Out of the 400 and some odd recommendations?
445, to be exact. Now I know. So it's, it's been an interesting three months. I'm about halfway through. I've written a couple of things so far, and actually, if you look in the chat, there's a Google Drive folder of all of the reports that I've finished up so far. It's about 10 reports and various interview write-ups and all sorts of, all sorts of goodies. So, yeah, like I said, I've, you know, reviewed and, and made up this whole big spreadsheet, which is in there. Not completely complete yet, but almost there, of the tasks that were explicitly outlined by the comprehensive plan. And, you know, basically figuring out what got done, what was done at the time the comprehensive plan was published, and what was not done. And this was all with the goal of kind of an environmental focus, especially in the village, which just got its bronze certification from the Climate Smart Communities Program. We're looking for ways to kind of advance to the next level, and, you know, we're looking for basically things in the comprehensive plan that are serving as the impetus for, for planning. If, if it says that we should do something in the comprehensive plan, we got to do it.
David, let me just interrupt, because I actually looked at this, and like your, your thing here, operating farms that have prime agricultural soils should have a priority for the proposed purchase of development rights program, but that, stuff like that is not within our control.
Yeah, and that's kind of the, the issue that I'm bumping up against with, with this sort of review.
Because it's such an aspirational list, and we can't affect, you know, like, like having the station not become an MTA station. There are things on here that really, we have no say about.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's in, kind of included in my, in my analysis, in that a lot of these things are very aspirational and impossible to track down, because they're, you know, just conversations with PTCDC and various other agencies that, you know, they're impossible to track down, but they're also, they are aspirational. And, you know, I'm, I'm not so much just trying to say that, you know, all of these things didn't get done in the comprehensive plan. It's more saying, you know, these are the goals that we had in the comprehensive plan, and ideally, you know, this is how we should be thinking about a comprehensive plan update. In all my conversations that I've had with planners at the kind of regional level, with the Hudson Valley Regional Council, and some folks, you know, also locally, there's this idea that comprehensive plans should be updated every five to 10 years, and, you know, we've since eclipsed that with the town's comprehensive plan. And it's, it's, would be a really good idea to update it. You know, the, the town comprehensive plan, as it stood in 2009, had nothing to say about climate change. You know, the words emissions, climate change, global warming were not mentioned at all. And obviously, there's been a huge programmatic focus, you know, that's, that's shifted since then with the, the commencement of the Joint Environmental Committee, which was three years ago, and that's now a big focus that is, you know, visibly lacking from the comprehensive plan. So basically, what I've, you know, been doing in addition to, you know, digitizing that whole spreadsheet and, and lists of tasks that is in the comprehensive plan is writing a literature review, which was the first thing I did, about basically what the contemporary thinking is about a lot of the initiatives that were included in the plan and what's kind of come up since. You know, there are a lot of initiatives such as composting, things that weren't included at all in the comprehensive plan that I'm thinking should be included in a potential update. And my final report, which I'll be giving at, at the end of the, of December, I'm only halfway through my project as it stands now, that will include a prioritized, you know, top 10 list of of tasks that I think the village should undertake, the town should undertake, ideally some that the town and village can undertake together. And, you know, that'll be the main output of, of this project, and that's the idea, and that's what Matt Stinchcomb and Vanessa Bertozzi had in mind, is that this project will create, not necessarily ready-made, but I, you know, ideally projects where we know where we could go for funding, where we know where we could go for grants, and things that could be implemented fairly quickly and impactfully that are going to serve to reduce emissions, help our standing in climate smart communities, and increase sustainability. So that's kind of the, the main goal of my plan, how, of my project, how I'm going about it, is in, in a variety of ways, including going through all the, you know, measures of the, the comprehensive plan, which, you know, all those tasks, they range in scope from, you know, changing something about the, the noise regulation, so and things like that, and then, you know, things to, like, you know, we should be preserving as much land as possible through, through conservation districts, you know, very widely ranging in scope. Yeah, so, you know, what's coming up are, you know, two more reports, one on transportation, which I'm about to finish, and another on energy. You know, I'm going to review basically what happened with the LED standards, which I heard was a bit of a mess. When that happened, I, that, that law is still kind of a hole in the, in the town code.
What do you mean, what, what do you mean, are LED streetlights?
No.
The lead, yeah.
Lead standards that were stripped out of the comprehensive.
Yeah, I don't think it was a mess. I think what we found is that it might, you know, that there was a disconnect between what builders were doing and what, you know, the burden on homeowners, and contemporary building standards were maybe as good as what they were recommending.
Yeah, well, you know, just things like that in general, where, you know, that, that was, like you said, it was implemented without the, the necessarily knowledge to make a policy like that effective. And, you know, that's, you know, something that, that's come up in, in a couple of cases. But, yeah, so that's, that's pretty much, you know, what I have left to do, and then again, you know, prioritizing our recommendations for what, what can get us Climate Smart Community points, and I know that the town is not yet climate smart certified. It's, it's taken the Climate Smart Community pledge, but it's not bronze certified as the village is, so that's.
Yeah, we have all the necessary points. We just haven't done the paperwork.
Yeah, I was wondering if that was what that, that point on the agenda was about.
Yeah, we'd love for you to do it, but I don't think you can, but so.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, I just want to say one thing about the aspirational, you know, the goal here is for actionable, so just to be clear about that.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great.
So we'll look forward to your further reports, and we could put this one on our town website, and, you know, I guess the town board should look at it and make sure that you don't have any questions before we, we put it up.
Sure, yeah, and, and, you know, I, I posted the file to the, or a link rather, to that Google folder in the chat, so those materials are all completed and are ready to be shared whenever you would like.
Great, thank you, David, and thanks for your work with helping us in the village and the Joint Environmental Committee.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Thanks, David.
Sure, thanks, Sue. You're next, Sue. Are you still here? Let's come back to Sue C. We'll go through our meeting resolution. Yeah. It's been one of our longest meetings, so I would, I'm going to go to the money first. I'm going to go to tab number eight, I'll make a motion for Resolution 202185, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, nine seventy-eight checks for $276, 344 and 46 cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Is, are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for our Resolution 202186, for our capital projects abstract, one check for $2,173 and $73. May I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Back to page one. Sue, are you there yet?
I'll text her.
Okay. Resolution 202178, authorizing highway superintendent to advertise for 2021 material bids. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. What was that, Alan?
I was just going to say, this is what we do every year. It's all the materials for the, for road maintenance and salt.
Yeah. Josh, did you say something?
I, I just heard from Sue via text. She's trying to get back on.
All right, or we can reschedule her. I know it's really late. It's, it's a long meeting for us.
Here she, here she comes.
Hi, Sue.
Hello, all. Sorry about that little text.
No, sorry, we, this is a very long meeting for us. Thanks for being flexible.
Oh, totally, yeah.
So you're going to talk to us about the Conway Study, which you generously funded for us, and it's an amazing study, and about recommendations for projects within the Conway Study for consideration.
Great. I first have to say that the process was very interesting and helped me to learn more about the park myself. And as, as being part of the park committee, it was very enlightening, and I think there are some things that I would like to suggest. We have only had two meetings so far, so we haven't really done very much at all, except, except about our structure and organization. But what I'm finding is that the park is made up of many different parts, you know, the library, the rec, rec park, you know, the community garden, and it would be nice to have representation from all of those elements, work with the park committee, so that we can look at the, the whole park more holistically. And I'm not sure how, if you have suggestions for how that can be done, that would be great, you know, because I know the library is, is in process of, of working on plans for their site. So it'd be great to, you know, mesh our ideas together. And to that effect, what David Chernak just said about the comprehensive plan being done in 2009, I, I have sort of the same feeling about our park plan. I mean, it was done quite a while ago. I know it was done with a lot of effort, and people want to hold on to that, you know, that, that victory, as it were. But I feel like things have really changed, and maybe we need to relook at the, the park, you know, as a whole.
Didn't? I don't know, I'm just spitballing here, but
Sure.
The Conway Study really focuses on sustainability in the park and future shade and pollinator gardens, like you were saying, all the things we weren't talking about, you know, in 2007, eight, nine.
Yes.
Do we need to redo the park master plan, or do we do an overlay? Like, what's the best way to do it?
Well, my question is, do we still need, you know, how many, ever many soccer fields are planned, or, you know, is there still the need for pro, those programs?
Well, the soccer people will tell you yes, and we have one turf soccer field planned because of, you know, global warming. We're back to turf now.
Oh, is that right? I didn't know that.
Yes, so that it doesn't, so that it's playable all year round.
Right. Oh, that's right. Turf, turf means Asher turf.
Yes, it's, and, and it's, it's a better prod, product now than it was 10 years ago, and we have put money aside to do a master plan, a reno for the pool area and the buildings and the playground, which desperately need it.
Sure.
Maybe we need to look at that in conjunction with some of the recommendations from the Conway.
Sure, yes.
You know, what, what we want to do is, you know, 20, 30, 40 years from now, have something that's cooler and feeds our pollinators, and, you know, feeds our, our residents, whether it's herbs, or, you know, there's a lot of opportunity here with that land.
Okay, I'm going to share with you my Google Doc. It's in the chat box of recommendations. One of the main things that was well substantiated is that we need more shade in the park to make it more usable. And with climate change and global warming, you know, warming trends, it makes it even more important. So I think one of the most easily actionable items is to start, start with a shade tree plant and planting. So that was my first. So that was my first, uh, um. Realization from the, you know, the survey that they did, a lot of people wanted to have shade. And they showed, you know, were the patterns of, of, um, light and shade in the whole park. The other was, um, the, the question I have is the, the farmland. Um, and how, what are, are they? With farmer is and how, how much we can, I would love if we could work with the farmer to implement pollinator strips within his agriculture. And.
I mean, the farmland in our.
Yes, the one that, uh, farmer Scholdorf.
The Scholdorf farm uses for feed.
Yes, um, so, you know, there are a couple of things that I have, um, that we can take action on that don't, don't really cost anything. Which is, um, the, the management of the open fields, um, to use the, the management plan that was recommended for, by the Conway study. Which preserves habitat for as long as possible for insects as well as other, other animals. I think there should, I, I'm not sure who the town, um. The path, is there a pathway or trails committee?
It's all the park committee.
No, we have a trails committee that is working with Alta on trails to connect Amtrak with the village. The trails within the park are overseen by our maintenance department and the park committee.
Okay.
But we do have a separate trail committee that, uh, Josh.
I know they did put some blue, new signs on, so I was wondering who did that part of it? You know, who is overseeing the, the blue trails and, uh, you know, whatever other signage is there?
What do you mean overseeing?
I mean, who, who is working on that? You know, as far as where this, what the signs are called, where are they going and, you know?
The park committee has been charged with three things, four things, which is overseeing the maintenance development. And, and, uh, you know, further development of the trails. Doing an RFP for the renovation and renewal of the playground, pool and courts area. Conway study and sustainable, uh, garden projects and, uh, the soccer fields.
Okay.
That's the charge of the recreation committee.
Uh, rec committee or the park committee?
Sorry, the Mazarella Park Committee.
Okay. So to that end, I think it would be great to, you know, work with the, the rec department and whoever, who previously developed the, the trails in the whole park.
What, what's the, um, it was a part of the master plan and it was done by the Thompson Mazarella Park Committee and the Eagle Scouts and.
Okay.
And some contractors.
So the other part was, um, how much can we work with the farmer? You know, what is the agreement with him?
I mean, you can basically bring us through yourself or the committee, any ideas that you want, and we can say yea or, or nay.
Okay, yeah.
Right, guys?
Yes.
It'd be good to work with the park committee, however.
Yeah, no, I'm here all by myself. We, we have had a meeting, uh, yet because of COVID.
And Sue was on the park committee, so, you know, I think this board is pretty supportive. And I think we've said that, you know, we have a budget session coming up and, you know, we could look at funding a portion of this. You know, we could look at putting in s- uh, small trees that would be big trees in 20 years and.
Okay. The other thing was signage. We saw a real need for signage. To make the park easier to, to use and more recognizable, you know, the distances, you know, of the, the loops. And, uh, and, you know, as in particular, a sign near the pedestrian entrance at, in the, um, the, the eastern corner. Off of, uh, Market Street.
Yeah.
Um, it would be nice to have, um, you know, a trails map there with, um, distances and a welcome and, you know.
There is, isn't there that in the, in the, uh, kiosk area?
There is, but it's not really geared towards somebody walking off Market Street from the village. You know, it's not a pedestrian friendly thing. You have to drive and park in the parking lot to see that.
Anything that you wanna bring us, as I said, it's budget season. I, I've been saying I'd love to see the front field naturalized, you know, like it should be pollinators.
I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback here.
We all are, it's just a work.
So would, would I, would it be okay to start to get some pricing for different things? Like putting in a, a pollinator field or signage?
I agree with you. There's, there's five people who make a decision and you should work with Josh to get us anything that you want. And this board will decide whether or not they wanna fund it. I, I can look at it for my preliminary draft budget and then the board will decide, you know, with, with the tentative budget.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Josh, for all your help on this.
Is that okay? I, 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 um, 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 nominating you for yet another project, Joshy.
Well, it's fine. I'm, I'm, I think it's, uh, it's sort of in my wheelhouse. I'm, I'm interested. I'm, I'd like to help.
Great, um, so, yeah, just my, my outline pretty much, like, goes through the notes that I went with. I really would like to work with the farmer. The shade trees would be great, uh, a pollinator demonstration garden. Now, that, that, the pollinator demonstration garden that was designed by Conway is actually, I believe, on the library plot. So I'm not sure how that, that works, like, how does the town interact with the library?
I don't think we'd fund something on this land. I, I'm just speaking for myself, but I know. I mean, we could move it someplace else.
Sure.
I, I mean, to me, the mowed lawn in the front, just, it's anachronistic, you know? Um, it doesn't say, um, nourishing.
Beautiful meadow.
Yeah.
That would be really lovely.
Yeah, you know, with a, with a mowed out seating area in the center and a kiosk for trails. So there's so much potential there and, you know, it's labor saving as well when you're not.
Sure.
You know, and there's no emissions and, um, you know, I, I just say, you know, come up with some ideas with, um, numbers and, and present them to Josh. And, you know, we gotta have our budget done, uh, at the, we're going early this year. We're going the, uh, end of October, I think, so.
Okay. Okay, um, are there any requirements? Uh, Josh, I know we talked about it for, uh, who we're hiring to do any, you know, any of this stuff. Uh, does it have to, do they have to be licensed in some way or go through any?
Think so, but I think we need to understand the magnitude, um, and then figure it out from there. But I think we're talking about plantings and things like that, um, we probably need someone, as you mentioned, back from Conway to give us some guidance. Temporary thing or if it's not construction, I suspect there's some leeway.
You know, also during this time of COVID, we didn't spend a lot of money on active recreation. So we have some money to, to, from the savings this year. We didn't want a savings. We just couldn't safely open our camp to fund some passive recreation that will be sustainable. I mean, if you get a sign made, the highway department can put it in. If you're doing a no-mow field, you know, it, it can be implemented in different ways. So I think your job is sort of, you know, making a list and prioritizing what you, what would be good to see done. Bringing it to the board and, and we can see if we can fund it or not.
I wanted to add that two of the things that I really loved about the study were the suggestion of viewing pavilions on the, on the trail loop. One overlooking the, the intersection of the two, uh, kills, which they, there are all these pathways. You know, I think they, you wanted to avoid, you know, people trampling there, but it's happening because people are just naturally drawn there. So to, to put something there that would prevent, you know, erosion, you know, be an actual pavilion, I think would be really a great asset.
To wit, poets walk, you know, some of my favorite places are the pavilions, just to respite and, uh, you know.
Right.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, your passion for what you're doing and your generosity with the Conway study and the park. And, and all your, the fruits, uh, no pun intended of the garden, it's a real asset for us, Sue, so thank you.
So, so thank you. You're welcome. It's my pleasure. And, and I will be talking to you more, uh, I mentioned it to Josh, but I have, um, backyard to table, which is my, you know, initiative to teach people how to. Uh, grow their own food, and I think now more than ever because of this food insecurity crisis. I was going to put together a, a package that we could provide and, and be a town service for people who wanna have gardens. And just say, you know, we would get volunteers to.
Like this.
What's that? Yes.
This, here's your plan, do it, yeah. That's great.
And we thought we, it'd be great to do a kickoff garden a- at the town hall, you know, that might be prob.
Again, our, you know, we talk about our landscaping, it's a little anachronistic. And wouldn't it be great if we had herbs and pollinators and tomatoes or, I don't know, you know.
Yeah. So stay tuned for that. All right, thank you all. Do you have any questions? Did, did any, I, I was wondering if anyone has looked at it and, uh, I'd love to get feedback, you know, what you thought.
Uh, the, it was so aspirational and I was really impressed with the amount of work that they did in such a short time. You know, and there's so much there to look at and choose from. It's exciting, you know, and it, like you said, what excited me was thinking about. Future park through this lens, so I'm really grateful for that. You know, I love the idea of the stands of shade trees and.
Yes.
Breaking up the, uh, the fields. I found it, uh, you know, it, it was a really feel-good, uh, project. There was no negativity about that.
It was aspirational, as you said.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Let's make it reality.
I agree.
Piece by piece, Sue, you know, it's a, perennial gardens take three to five years, right? So this is, we gotta start now and keep moving ahead.
Well, thank you all for your time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, have a great evening.
Okay, look forward to seeing you. Um, okay, all right, back to, uh, anything, uh. Okay, I think, guys, uh, we're through all the presentations. We've done one and two. Uh, I'm going to tab three, resolution 202180, approving the proposed name of the private drive located on parcel ID, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Josh, may I have a second?
I'll second it, but can I ask where this is?
Yeah, um, remember this is the extension of Will Tremper Road that comes out on Ackert Hook. That the developer wanted to call after his son and we said no, and we made the resolution that our historians weigh in on all town road names. And they should be reflective of the physical and historical aspect of the town.
Right.
So the agreed upon dra- uh, name that, uh, our historians proposed is Forest Drive. Because it, it was part of an old. Court, court, drive, court lane, yes. Uh, so it's the extension of, uh, Will Tremper Stortini area, um, to the south on Ackert Hook. And there will be two roads there, uh, eventually.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 202181, uh, appointment to the Conservation Advisory Board, Craig, uh, Bo Jaski. Are we tabling this, Ed?
No.
We just had another resignation today.
Who was that?
Uh, Rachel, Rachel resigned today.
We need to know resignation.
So, um, Craig's got a great resume, uh, he seems, uh, really, really well qualified. I just feel like we keep losing people. I don't know if it's too much of a, a, a chore for the board. I can't hear you at all. I see your mouth moving, but.
Yeah, thanks. No, uh, we're gonna work on that. We're getting it better, okay?
Yeah, we are.
Working on active members, inactive members. We have a discussion after the meeting near the end, okay?
Okay, all right, well, thank you. I mean, um, I think his resume is terrific and he's an, um, you know, uh, a, um, a resident. It'll be great to have him, so thanks for stepping up, Craig. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, um. Resolution 202182, opening a climate smart community account with the Department of Environmental Conservation. May I have a motion, Josh?
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 202183, advertise for part-time laborers in Conservation Advisory Board Clerk. May I have a motion? Ed, thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Uh, Ed, I talked to the clerks, I talked to the chairs of the planning board and the, um, and the, uh, um. Zoning Board of Appeals and the clerks to see if they could take on between the two of them, the Conservation Advisory Board. And they're mulling it over to see how it could work. I think that that would be, you know, a lifesaver, uh, and, you know, we rely on the staff often to tell us how best to do things, so. What they say. It's really hard to fill a five-hour-a-week job.
So we should table this, I guess.
Well, no, I, I think we could pass it and then just not, uh, advertise for the Conservation Advisory Board Clerk. We do need part-time laborers, um. And this is for, at the transfer station and at the, um, landfill? Ed?
Or anyway, actually, yes, those two places primarily, but, uh, whoever this is could fill in other places where, where, when we need them, you know, that'd be great.
And this is a fifteen dollar an hour job? Yes?
Yes, to start with, it is, yes.
Okay, um, yes, you're, we're having terrible audio. Josh, did you have to say something?
I just said aye, I was gonna say yes.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any.
So moved, so. Uh, resolution 202184, requesting the New York State Department of State to assist Rhinebeck and other communities to address our concerns with Amtrak's proposed fencing plan. And the loss of our access to the Hudson. I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Uh, for the public, this just authorizes us to send this resolution to the Department of State. And it's a continuation of all the work that we're doing with, uh, Jeff Ansevino and Sina Hudson and Riverkeeper. To make sure that we, uh, are, uh, preserving our access to the Hudson as Amtrak continues to try and put fences up all along it. Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, um. Gosh, uh, hold on, Capital Projects Table, uh, tab 11, resolution 202188, renewal of lease for highway two-way radios from Nyc- Nycomco. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, uh, Chance, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, okay, great, uh.
Do you do, uh, highway superintendent to advertise for material bits or did I?
Yeah, we did that while we were waiting for Sue. I think while you were calling her. That's okay, you were calling Sue C. Um, I think we got it all, guys. Any, any? Um, any, any discussion items or?
We have one.
I do want to let everybody know that, uh, there's a whole controversy going on with the Owen Dow murals at the post office. Um, in the next week or two, they are going to be covered up. Um, Gary Bassett, the mayor, and I are working with Bill Jeffways, who's the Duchess County Historical Society, uh, president and our, um, historians Nancy and, um, Mike Fraser, Nancy Kelly and Mike Fraser, to try and and, um, appeal to not have them up and to start a meaningful conversation about, uh, how, uh, people of color, black people and enslaved people are depicted. Um, and we don't know why the post office is moving to cover them up other than that there was one opinion letter by a well-meaning.
A well.
Resident Reinbeck.
Resident Reinbeck.
Doesn't really seem to reflect everybody's views, so I just want to let you all know that, uh, uh, as a town board or as the supervisor, I am helping to, um, make sure that the murals s- stay up.
Other items?
Yeah.
The conservation board has four active members, there are three inactive members, they are requesting that I ask them to step down.
Who's who's requesting?
The four active members are asking for, one already resigned today, you said Rachel resigned, we have two others, Amy who won't come on board until January and Nancy Richard, who's inactive as well. They're asking to make space so we can add members that would be active because they have to do site visits and aren't many people, there are only four active, two Dixons and two Bakers. I can't hear you.
You're muted, Liz.
I was muted, um. I I mean, um, I know that, um, Amy can't serve because of family ish. If we find somebody else, we could ask them.
Yeah, we got two more in, uh, Joe Kupiak and and Craig tonight. We have other four active members, so they might make six, but they're asking for the other three to step to step down because they would like to get some people who need to be active and working. So I.
Nancy Richards is incredibly active, she's running the whole renovation of the Church of the Messiah and Amy's just out of town on family business and can't start until January, correct?
This is Nancy or this Amy?
Um, well, Nancy's the former and Amy's the latter.
Yeah, Nancy, currently they think that they need active members, they don't even attend meetings or they don't do site visits.
Well, let's not be disparaging. It's a heavy-duty volunteer job and, um, whatever you guys want to do, I I'm not, I I'm not in favor of asking people to step down.
Is that what's on the table or the issue is we need more people?
Both, I think.
So, Ed, maybe you and I can speak tomorrow just so I can better what the requirements are because maybe there's someone from my group that might fit the.
Ed, who are our active members?
Uh, the two Dixons, Mark Dixon and his son, uh, George Baker and, uh, another Baker, I forgot her first name. But they're not related.
Gabriella.
Yeah, Gabri.
And then Craig, Craig and Joe Kupiak.
No, no, right.
And both of us came to the last meeting, so they're.
That's only eight people, so who's the ninth? Um, we have the two Dixons, the two Bakers, Craig, Joe. Why don't you talk to Joe about, I talked to Josh about it tomorrow?
Yeah, maybe there's just somebody in my world, you know?
Yeah, okay, but should I ask those people who are inactive to step down? That's the question.
I think you should be patient, Richard, because I think she's gonna become available after December.
Okay, Fred, thanks. Nancy's overseeing the renovation of the Church of the Messiah. She's an incredibly powerful, wonderful woman and I know she's got her handfuls with running the, sorry, I couldn't help it, Fred, it's late, this is a big meeting for us. Uh, she's running that whole renovation, if she would give us, you know, a quarter of that energy, she'd have this whole, you know, I think she's terrific and, you know, Amy Wu's got great credentials as well.
They're stopping in December, they can't finish the project because of funding, so Nancy's gonna have some time.
There you have it, great. I I'm loathe to ask people to step down, I think. Uh, but you guys decide, I I say no. Josh?
Yeah, I, yeah, I I have to understand the situation a little bit more, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm there.
Okay, here's the situation, most people have to go out and do those. Apparently, the only four people ever doing these are the four I mentioned, the Bakers and the Dixons. Nobody else is doing anything.
I think Josh has just said he wants to sit down with you and talk. Nancy will be back on in December and Amy will start in January.
Yeah, Ed, let's talk tomorrow so we just understand it a little bit better.
Chauncey, do you have any input?
No, I'm, I don't.
Thoroughly exhausted?
Oh, no, no, I I think it's a good idea to let like Josh and Ed meet and.
Crash it up.
And, you know, uh, on the subject of of, uh, asking people to step down, it it is sensitive and difficult. And of course, another way to do it is to let the terms expire and gently, if that's possible, not reap.
Okay, uh, and you guys, um, I'm starting all of my budget meetings this week and next week, so, um, please make a list of all of the, uh, capital projects that you may want to be considered and make sure I have them by the end of next week. Yep, for any of your committees or stuff, you know, we we can spend some funds balance on capital projects. All right, um, anything else? If we haven't said it, uh, within two hours, I think we're done. What do you guys think? Motion to adjourn.
Right, so moved.
Everybody. Good night.
Good night.